You'll see four or five buildings that are in Sunny Crest neighborhood commercial area that are currently vacant. Also see a boundary line that represents a boundary around the commercial area that we call as the Sunny Crest Commercial Area. And what the proposal is, is to basically mirror some of the programs that we have available in the downtown in the Tiff 4 Cunningham Corridor, which is a, for the most part, a zero percent interest loan for the reuse of these buildings. We have it in two parts. If you go to the guidelines, that are page two of this attachment, we're proposing basically two separate programs from that line item. One is a retail business micro loan program, which would have loans between three and $10,000. And then we also would have a new retail business loan and grant program with generally the same numbers as we have on our downtown loan program. We didn't cut back on the grant component of that just because of the lack of funds, but basically it's very similar to the program that we put in place last year. So what we're proposing is to go ahead in this current budget year and allocate these funds. The administration is proposing that as part of the budget. I provided for you tonight the details of this incentive program, guidelines. What we can do with this is, we can work on this further in the upcoming weeks if you would so choose. But this is a first run at what we think, actually, there's been quite a bit of thought go into it as to what we think would work for us. We did want to go ahead and get that out there as a budget proposal. So, there's also a memo that I provided you with some, a little bit of planning background as to why we think this program would meet our objectives. I think the best approach on this is to take a look at it. Call me if you have questions. We would like to go ahead and authorize it in the budget next week. If there are further details and discussion about the program guidelines, we can do that at a later time.
Are there any questions for staff? Any other report, Mayor? Okay. We'll move on then to the next item, which is the minutes of the previous meeting of May 27, 2003 Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
It's a motion and a second. Are there any additions, corrections, or corrections? I just have one correction, I believe is just a typo, but I wanted to make sure. On page six, paragraph two, where it says, "Following debate, Ms. Wyman moved to amend her motion so that Mental Health Center, MHC, Time Center, which was listed at 9,500, be placed at 7,500, and place RPC Court Division Program at," and it states 400, it just wants an extra comma, I just want to make sure that that was understood to be 4,000. Best insert, and then it goes on, the rest is correct. So just a change from the 400 to 4,000 for RPC Court Division Programs. Is that all right? No further changes? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes. Next is public input. Anyone wishing to make public input can fill out one of these yellow cards and speak for up to five minutes. The first person speaking is Curtis Pettijohn, representing himself of 405 West Illinois, speaking in support of the moratorium on development.
I provided each of you with information sheets for U of I enrollment. Facts can be used to prove almost any point, pro con, but I figured that having the information would be a good thing to have, and I wasn't sure whether you had those or not. I just wanted to reiterate that I would like to see a moratorium on development until we have tightened what's going to happen on Green and Elm. And my concern and the reason that I have come tonight is that what I'm hearing is, we may get the moratorium, but in the end, what that might do is simply change and create guidelines for design for apartment buildings. And while I think that it would be nice to have apartment buildings that are contextual for a historic neighborhood, if the context is destroyed, it doesn't seem to me that there's a lot of point in making the apartments look like something that used to be there. I would urge you to please slow down and bring to a halt the increase in density along Green Street and maintain the buildings, the houses, that are what people think of Urbana to be. And that's all. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pettijohn? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Linda Lorenz of 409 West High Street, in support of the MOR, Moratorium.
I was born and raised here. I attended Leo School when Flossie Wiley was the principal. I'm a graduate of Urbana High School. When I bought my house 10 years ago, I had never owned a car and always commuted on a bicycle, and I wanted to be close to work, close to the public library, where I'm an active volunteer. I've run the last six book sales that we've had. I really wanted a house with wood floors and unpainted dark stained wood, which I have, and built-in linen closet, and built-in china closet. I have really great neighbors. I shovel the walk for several senior citizens and the man across the street who's caring for his mother with Alzheimer's. My mother had it, so I know what he's going through. I'm in support of this moratorium, and I hope that when we have guidelines, that those of us who live in the neighborhood and who are going to be affected by what might happen on Green Street have a say about it. If my family history has anything to do with me, I expect to be here at least another 20 years, and I would like my house to be sold to another family and be worth something when I'm ready to leave it. And I'm very concerned about the density, what's going to happen to the Ross House, what will happen to the houses on the north side of High Street. I do not want any more parking lots. I can't stand the ones that the Presbyterian Church put on Green Street. I don't like the one on High Street and the 500 block. I don't like the one on the Unitarian Church. And I'm really concerned that it's going to change the quality and the flavor of our neighborhood. And as you know, most of us live there because it's close to the campus and because we have a great school in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a question, if you don't mind? Mr. Otto's got a question.
Quick question. I meant to ask Mr. Pettijohn, but I'd like you to raise my hand before he got away. Sounds unrelated, but it's not entirely unrelated. Do you support bringing a trolley to Urbana?
Do I? No.
No? Okay. Thanks.
Next is Lois Steinberg, speaking in support of the MOR, Moratorium.
I really wasn't going to speak. I checked that I wasn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wanted to respond to his question. I do support the trolley train. I think it would benefit, it's quieter than buses, and, you know, I attended the thing that they had over in Champaign, and I think it would be great. Even if it went down Green Street, it would also be fine, because it is quieter than the buses. And I hope that you vote in favor of the moratorium.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Next is Carolyn Vaxley, also speaking on the MOR of 510 West Main Street.
I came tonight because I was on the Plan Commission when the downtown-to-campus study was done and when the language for the MOR district was drafted. And I would like to just remind the council at this point, because you clearly are about to enter into a reexamination of this district, and I would like to remind you of what this district was designed to do. Because what I'm hearing is that there is feeling floating around that, in order to get the light rail system, that there has to be high density on Green Street. I think this is fallacious. I think that it flies in the face of everything the MOR district was designed to do, and I also think that it's, what's the right word? It's not in keeping with the comprehensive plan that has been adopted. And theoretically, the comprehensive plan is the will of the people, because they were given an opportunity to comment on it, and there was extensive public input on the downtown-to-campus plan before the zoning changes were made. The one thing that I would like to tell you is that when Plan Commission reviewed this district, the MOR district and Main Street, the downzoning to R2 on Main Street were the two least contested areas that we looked at. Everyone on Plan Commission supported this MOR district. Jeff Talk was the chair at that time, and I've spoken with Jeff since then about these proposed changes, and hopefully he will be communicating with you in writing. But the purpose of it was to slow down high-density development, to allow some business development along Green Street and Elm Street of smaller sizes that you see in other college towns all over the country. Now granted, that has not happened, but there are many reasons for that, and one of which is that if you want it to happen, the city needs to provide some incentives for it to happen. There are ways to do that as well, but that's not the purpose of tonight's meeting, so I'm not going to elaborate on that. But I'm here to urge you to go back and read very carefully the language in the original MOR district, and don't abandon the principles that, you know, led to that ordinance. Go back and do the moratorium, look at what the Citizens Committee came up with that later studied the MOR. I wouldn't hesitate to say for a second that there are flaws in it, and they need to be fixed. One is citizen input on the design review board. But don't throw out the baby with the bathwater. Go back and look at the original intent, and think about the look of Green and Elm Streets, and what's going to happen to that if high density is allowed to develop. I think a light rail is wonderful. I've traveled extensively in Europe and seen many different kinds of light rail. I think it would be a boon to both cities if they're connected by the light rail system, but I do not think that in order to get that, you have to have high-density apartment development along the Green Street Corridor. I think the point is to connect our two retail areas, and to help both downtowns and the campus town, you know, as far as I'm concerned, that's my objective in supporting light rail. And I just don't think that high-density apartment has any bearing on it one way or the other. The point is to get people moving back and forth, you know, into and away from the downtowns, and I don't think you have to change the MOR district to get that done.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Vaxley? Thank you very much. Next is Bryan Adams of 412 West Elm Street.
My intention was just to come and listen to, but I will go ahead and just say a few things. We recently bought a house on 412 West Elm. It's an older house, and we've been working very hard to fix it up and to make it look like it may have at one point in the past. And we'd like to see the old feeling of Urbana be retained in that particular part of Elm Street. Really, there's only one section of Elm Street that's sort of intact in terms of the early architecture. Most of the other sections are pretty much broken up by parking lots or modern apartment buildings that don't really fit in. So we would, I pretty much am in support of trying to reexamine any sorts of future plans to develop the area that would detract from the old historic architectural feeling for the part of Elm Street. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Adams? Thank you very much. Next is Elana Markowski, 412 West Elm. I apologize for not saying it correctly.
I live in the 400 block of Elm Street, in a house that we have recently bought. My main concern is regarding future development, downtown Urbana development, is to retain the historic integrity of Urbana. I moved to this town 12 years ago, and I find it to be a town, a downtown, that has no historic integrity whatsoever. It's a mishmash of a few old houses, a lot of totally unfitting new buildings, and too many parking lots. This town doesn't have any natural asset in terms of natural beauty to look at. It doesn't have a nice big river to walk by. It doesn't have hills around or mountains. The only thing that this town would have as something for strangers who come in here to look at would be its beautiful architecture. But this architecture is, on a daily basis, being destroyed. That's my main concern in coming to this meeting today, to save the old historic district or whatever is left of in Urbana. Regarding the earlier question, I am for the rail between Champaign and Urbana, including the university, and I don't believe that increasing density along Green Street or Elm Street should be involved in this decision. I think there are enough people there right now, students and otherwise, who would be glad to use that facility. I don't know if financially increasing density has anything to do with buildings. That's it.
Are there any questions? Mr. Otto?
Good question. Have you considered requesting historic landmark status for your house?
Yeah, we have considered that. Haven't made steps so far, but yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there questions? Mr. Waylon?
Maybe I can ask a question. What do you think of the, this light rail system coming into town?
I agree with that. I would like to see that. I am from Europe, and those exist all over Europe, and I find them extremely useful, especially with the university here and two downtowns, Champaign and Urbana, that are fairly far from the university, especially Champaign. It would be great to have a commuting system that connects the two downtowns and the university in a fast manner and efficient manner. So I am for it.
Do you consider the bus a system, a transit system?
Yes, I do, and I use the bus also. I find the tram systems actually better and more efficient, because the buses go long distances all around town, and this would just operate in the short distance and hopefully at great regularity. That's what I think of a fast rail system, that you can hop on this every five minutes or every three minutes and go, instead of having to wait on the corner for 20 minutes for a bus, especially in snow or rain. So I think the electric rail system is really a lot better.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lawrence Parker of 412 West Green Street, speaking on development, in opposition to development on Green Street.
We are recent, relatively recent homeowners on 412 West Green Street on the corner of Green and McCullough, and we have, we could have chosen to buy it in a lot of different areas in Urbana, but we chose that particular area because of the unique diversity that we saw with respect to homeowners, students, senior citizens, families, and the mix of buildings and people who live there in that unique part of Urbana. And that was the main reason why we bought our house in that particular area, as well as the fact that it was a beautifully landscaped house, and we really wanted to try to take our hand in gardening and keep that up. I feel that there should be a request on the moratorium on the development, just in order to get a more careful handle on the types of development that are going on, and to really try to get a gauge of how that might disrupt some aspects of the neighborhood diversity within that particular area of Urbana. And that's really all I wanted to say with respect to this position, that it may, that there be some consideration with respect to the unique diversity of that particular area of Urbana, and how the continuing development may disrupt that.
Are there any questions? Thank you very much. Next is Georgia Morgan of 804 West Nevada, speaking in support of the moratorium.
Georgia Morgan, I'll be brief, because people have already made most of the points that I would like to emphasize, mainly that when the downtown-to-campus plan was developed, the idea of this district was that it would preserve the architecture, that it would be for business and residential at the density at which it is, or was then, currently composed, not for high-density development for some reason that was not even entertained. The architecture of Urbana is one of its treasures, is one of its assets. And, you know, we've seen houses falling down left and right, on campus, off campus, on Green Street. So I would like to see this stop and to preserve the architecture that we've got. It's beautiful architecture. There's no reason why it can't be commercial architecture. I mean, it already exists. There are lawyers' offices in these beautiful buildings. All kinds of commerce can take place in buildings like that. They don't need to be torn down and filled up with people who don't care about the architecture and will trash whatever gets built there. So that's, I said I'd be brief.
Are there any questions for Ms. Morgan? Mr. Otto?
What are your thoughts on the trolley?
I had not imagined that the trolley was relevant to preserving the architecture on Green and Elm in this district, so I really, I'm not opposed to it, but I will admit I have not read all of the information. It seems like it ought to be a good thing. If we're going to maintain and develop commerce in Urbana, make it easy for all those 36,000 students to get to Urbana would be a good thing, it seems to me.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Waylon?
Just curious, you mentioned so much the beautiful architecture. Can you think of any one particular building that might be noteworthy?
So many houses on Green Street, Main Street, Elm Street. I love to drive and to walk on there. I don't pay attention to the numbers. I just look at the houses. I'm sorry. But Mrs. Coons's fourth grade class did a book on the architecture of Urbana. I would recommend that, too. They have that at the Urbana Free Library, just the details of their construction and so on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Barry Weiner of Weiner Companies Limited at 211 East Green Street, speaking in opposition to the MOR, Moratorium.
Hi. You know, I've been in the real estate business in Champaign, Urbana, for 32 years, and have rarely come to a council meeting, because basically don't like to get involved in battles or fights or anything in that order. I am opposed to a moratorium, primarily because I think it's a bad message to send to the community. The moratorium itself, we had an office in Colorado Springs also for 22 years, and there was a moratorium there at one point, and it caused almost all development in that community to stop for a period of about three years. And it was a disaster for the community. And I don't know that this moratorium is going to do anything like that. I just, I don't like the message. I would say this, I think the MOR zone is broken. I think the MOR zone needs tremendous looking at. I think there are a lot of issues that need to be dealt with. I don't know that a moratorium is necessary to go ahead and deal with them. I think that the council and the Plan Commission for years now should really have been looking at this zone. I believe that this is the one area, when you come down Green Street, you come down Elm Street, these are some of the areas where infill development can occur in Urbana and help the tax base. And I think it could be a positive thing. I personally am not a developer. I mean, I've built seven buildings in a total of 32 years in the real estate business. I don't think that counts as a developer. But I just envision the kinds of things that I think could be there. I think that there are some beautiful structures, and I think those beautiful structures will always continue to be there. I think there also are structures that have economic and physical obsolescence. And some of those structures have become parking lots. Some of them may, you know, may come down in the future, if nothing's done to encourage some good quality development in the area. I look at the lots where the Weaver Funeral Home was, and we have those lots sitting there empty. I'm afraid there's going to be more lots without some reason for something positive to occur. I believe that along the area, you know, I look at it, and I can imagine, you know, some nice little cafes and nice little businesses. I could see some beautiful condominiums that might appeal to faculty. I think that the era, the day of people just building student ghetto-type of housing is probably going to go away in this community, because I think it's finally starting to really get overbuilt. People have been saying it for years, that there's going to be a substantial vacancy factor in this community this fall. And I think that things are going to change. I think some quality things can happen here if we encourage it. And I just think that it's very important that we look at the issues. I was recently in Fort Collins, Colorado, and I have a daughter who's a physician there, and I just helped her buy her first house. And she lives in an area that's very much like this, not far from the campus and downtown Fort Collins. And I was walking along, and they're beautiful little brick houses, really very small bungalows. And it's really, really very, very pleasant. People have taken care of them. There are beautiful things going on. And then I got to one corner, and I looked up, and on a very small lot, there was a beautiful building. And I got very curious about this building, because I said, gee, this is about the size of an Urbana lot. And it turned out it actually was a little smaller than most of the Urbana lots. And I started ringing on bells and knocking on doors to try to find out what was going on. And it turned out there was an architecture firm that was headquartered in it. They had built this building. The building had about 15,000 square foot of building on a small lot. It only had six parking places, you know, and they said that they had parking problems, but the city allowed this, and the city actually gave them about 10% of the cost of their building to help this building get developed. But it was super high-quality, super beautiful. It had a little kitchen design store in it. It had a financial planner's office in it. It had the architecture firm in it. It had a full basement, it had meeting rooms and things set up for everybody in it. And then above there were four very large condominium units. And I was just very impressed, and I thought, this is the kind of thing that I can imagine happening at some of these places in Urbana. It's the kind of thing that you see on the near-north side of Chicago. I mean, I just believe that this is an area that could have wonderful, wonderful things happening if we encourage it to happen. And I think that, you know, that it will not hurt the area. It would be a positive to the area. I think that the beautiful homes that are there will certainly always remain there, but I think that we ought to encourage some of the things that are garbage to go down. And I think as a Realtor, I can say that I've probably been in more of these structures than anybody around here, because that's the area of town where we do an awful lot of business. And I can tell you, I've been in quite a few of them that don't deserve to stand any longer. I mean, I'm amazed people haven't been killed, because I think there are so many code violations. So all I can say is, I need to give great consideration to this. This could have a lot to do with the future of the city. So I hope so be wise in your decision.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Weiner? Mr. Waylon?
Mr. Weiner, are you familiar with the Shelley Plan? You're not familiar, you don't remember that?
Sorry.
Further?
It was a plan that was drafted in 1950. I wonder, I thought perhaps being in real estate, it had a lot to do with Green Street and the development of Green Street.
And I'm not quite that old. That's not what I've seen. I've seen a lot of plans over the years.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there any further public input at this point? All right. Uh, now we'll move on to item number five, the request for moratorium on further redevelopment within the MOR mixed-office residential district pending revised regulations. Mr. Kowalski?
Thank you. Uh, just want to take an opportunity to, uh, go over the staff report that was in your packet and then talk briefly about the process for a moratorium if you choose to give that direction. Um, your staff report offers us a little bit of background information on the MOR district, including, um, a map, which again, we looked at this last week or two weeks ago, but the map shows which properties are zoned MOR and the properties that are owner-occupied are circled. Um, you were given a corrective map on, in front of your chairs tonight because we missed one property. So, um, um, that map's for your reference. There's also a fact sheet on the MOR which, um, gives you a real quick breakdown of how the 90 or so properties that are zoned MOR are used, um, including renter-occupied homes, owner-occupied apartment buildings, parking lots, that kind of thing. Um, those numbers may not be exact. Uh, if we get into some changes to the district, we'll, we'll be looking at those a lot closer, but that's a rough breakdown. We've also given you a little bit of background of, uh, the new construction and demolitions and major remodels that have happened since the MOR was created in 1990. Um, there's a listing of the development review board cases that have been considered in the last 13 years and it's about 13 or 14 cases. Um, and then also on page seven, there's a, a little, a quick description sheet of, of what new development in the MOR is possible. Um, the MOR is a complex zone, uh, and has some, some restrictions on how much you can actually build in the zone. And it's a little hard to follow, but this gives you an overview of, uh, what floor-area ratio is, how it works, and how much of, of any given lot can be developed. Um, it gives a better indication of how much density can actually be achieved, um, given the current standards. And it gives us some facts on 611 West Green, which is the new, uh, development on Kohler. Um, and also the 712 West Green, which is Kevin Hunsinger's apartment building. Um, finally, there's a zoning description sheet for MOR which, um, lists out the intent of the district, uh, all of the uses that are permitted by right and by special use, et cetera. Uh, also gives the development regulations, um, and then gives the section of the zoning ordinance which, uh, specifies how the development review board, uh, functions and operates and, and the criteria that that board is supposed to use when considering plans. Um, as far as a moratorium, um, just briefly on the process for that, uh, you'll recall we recently did a moratorium for, um, the construction of new billboards in the community. We would have to follow that same process if you want to go that route. Um, we would, to do a moratorium, we would have to draft what's called an interim development ordinance or an IDO, which would be an amendment to our Urbana zoning ordinance. Um, this IDO, uh, would specify, uh, the goals, most importantly, the goals and objectives of the moratorium, why we are, why we are creating a moratorium, uh, and how developments or how properties are treated, uh, in that district during the moratorium. And then of course, how long the moratorium will last and what we expect to happen at the, at the conclusion of the moratorium. Um, this would be a text amendment again, uh, so we would have a public hearing with the, uh, plan commission and then it would come back to you for your final consideration of an ordinance passing the IDO. Um, at that point, we would then begin work on, um, making changes to the mixed-office residential district, uh, hopefully under the, the goals of the IDO. And then that would also go to the plan commission and then back to you. So it's, it's not a quick overnight process, but, um, is one that, um, you know, we've, we've been through before. Uh, in fact, the, um, the last, uh, IDO for this area, of course, was in 1988 when, um, moratorium was passed for a year's time while the, uh, development of the downtown to campus plan was, was created. Um, and that IDO had very, uh, long, lengthy, um, guidelines and restrictions on what can be done in that, in that area. Um, one of the things that the IDO, uh, should specify is, uh, some of the projects that are currently in the pipeline or specify how they would be treated. And that of course would be 611 West Green, which is under construction and has all the approvals. Um, 605 West Green is, uh, currently has an application pending with the development review board, which will meet on Monday. Um, and there's also an issue of a structure at 410 and a half West Elm, which is, um, uh, I believe subject to demolition. And that's a half structure behind 410 West Green.
Elm?
Elm, I'm sorry, Elm Street, not Green. Uh, summing up real quickly, your staff report also gives on page two, uh, kind of a bullet point list of some of the ideas that staff has offered for your consideration of an IDO and an eventual text amendment to the MOR. Um, possible goals, number one, to possibly reconsider the types of commercial uses that are permitted in the MOR zone. Um, as you know, the idea of, uh, in the MOR was to create small-scale commercial boutiques in the existing structures. And that hasn't really happened, as you know. In fact, we haven't really had a lot of requests for that to happen. Um, and what is possible to happen is the demolition of some structures and the establishment of a more modern type of commercial use. I'm not sure if that's really the goal of what we're looking for in the MOR, so that may be a consideration to think about. Uh, number two, reconsider the composition of the development review board to include an architect and a resident. Um, the current makeup of the development review board is, is five city staff members requiring a unanimous vote on proposals. Um, I think that has some problems inherent to it. Uh, we've got supervisors and subordinates on the same development review board making decisions on plans and doesn't seem to be a very broad perspective on these proposals and that could be widened. Uh, number three, reconsider the process of the development review board. That goes along with number two a little bit. One of the things that the DRB has to consider is 14 criteria. Some of those are repetitive, uh, difficult to, to use, um, and could be reconsidered. Four, allow the development review board to consider architectural and design features. It's explicitly stated in the zoning ordinance now that design, um, features, architectural characteristics, um, and aspects are not to be considered. And it's very difficult to do as we learned in 611 West Green when the criteria asks for the consideration of whether the project is harmonious and compatible with the neighborhood. Um, and that goes along with also having an architect on the development review board that can help with that kind of, um, technical expertise. Um, and finally incorporate some design guidelines for development in the district. I think both, uh, well, all staff of residents that we've talked to and even the developers find that that would be very useful to have it very, uh, clearly stated of what the intent of the design is in the district. Developers especially that would like to know what does the city envision for the development to look like, uh, in this corridor so they don't have to guess and spend a lot of money coming up with proposals. That just doesn't seem to be right. Um, so the development of design guidelines, we see those a lot in historic preservation districts. A lot of cities use those as not necessarily, um, strict regulations, but more of guidelines and, and suggestions. So that's an idea for your consideration also. Um, should you direct staff to create an IDO? Uh, we would recommend that it would be for the period of approximately 120 days. I think that should be adequate time to propose changes and, and run them through the public hearing process. I think that's it for now. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions for staff? Mr. Whalen?
Uh, Rob, the, um, you know, your, your alphabet soup has got me a little confused with the DRB and the MOR and the IDO. Um, it's a lot of, a lot of alphabets. Um, I'm curious to know, is this, this IDO, uh, is it, would it coordinate, uh, that is, would the development of coordinate with the, the DRB, the Development Review Board?
The IDO, uh, the interim development ordinance is simply the ordinance that says we're going to pass a moratorium.
Pass a moratorium.
At that point.
But I mean, go ahead.
At that point then, we, we would start to look at specific changes to the zoning district and, including the process of the development review board.
And so the development and review board would be included at that point in time?
Considerate, uh, making changes to the development review board, yeah.
What is the criteria for membership on that board?
Um, it's clearly specified in the zoning ordinance now who sits on that board. Um, it's, um, the building safety division manager, the director of public works, the director of community development services, and the city planner and his or her designated need.
You mentioned an architect. Is there one that's, uh, thought of, uh, offhand or?
No.
One that's presently involved?
Uh, there is not an architect presently involved. Um, it's just a suggestion of a way we could go.
How would you select an architect?
Um, it would, it would, uh, probably the most common way would be, uh, appointed by the mayor, approved by council or some method like that.
Is there a great rush to develop in this MOR district?
Well, the, um, the case at 611 West Green was the first case we've had in, uh, six years. Um, and I don't know, I guess it's coincidence, but immediately followed by that one, we've had the request at 605 West Green. Um, so those two have happened at the same time. Um, I, uh, you know, we don't have any other proposals in front of us. Um, we, you know, often hear of somebody may bought a property and is planning on doing something, but we don't have any other proposals. And, um, that's one of the, that's one of the considerations, you know? Do we need to do a moratorium? Is there a lot of pending development? And that's, that's hard to predict. If you didn't do a moratorium and we just started making corrections to the, the zoning ordinance for the MOR district, it's very possible that a proposal could come in for another development in the district and may not. It's really hard to predict.
Well, if it hasn't happened in six years, it doesn't seem like there's an impending, uh, desire to change the nature of the property in that, along Green Street or Elm. Would you say?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't.
If there hasn't been in the past six years any great, uh, rush to change the nature of this Elm Street or Green Street, I can't imagine there being any great impending demand for it in the near future.
Maybe. I, I don't know. It's hard to predict when someone's going to come in with a proposal.
I know, it's hard to predict. I, I'm just, it just seems to me logical that we, uh, we're anticipating great rushes of change here in the city of Urbana and I don't see that. It hasn't happened. You know, are you familiar with the Shelley Plan I mentioned earlier?
I haven't seen it, but I've heard of it.
It was drafted back in 1950 and it had, as I recall, I wasn't involved in the local politics or government either at the time, but when I first became aware of it, it was, uh, the zoning for downtown allowed for, uh, explosive fuel storage and, and, uh, all kinds of things that were relevant to the farm community, agricultural use. But Green Street was supposedly at that time to allow for something like the MOR. It was to include, uh, residential and commercial. I, I believe that was one of the things that, uh, highlighted, was highlighted in that plan. It might be interesting to look at, but is your, your recommendation is to, uh, go ahead with this IDO?
If, uh, if we're directed to do so, I think it should be for a period of 120 days. Um, it's, to be quite honest, it's, it's a lot of work just to do the IDO. I mean, we'll, we'll spend the next couple of months drafting a text amendment to include in the zoning ordinance to temporarily have a moratorium and that's a lot of work in itself. Um, you know, again, I can't predict if something would come in if we didn't do an, uh, an IDO, but, uh, you know, that's really council's decision.
So when you're not talking just about 120 days, you're talking about another 60 days on top of that?
Correct.
180 days.
Yeah, it may not be 60 days and we could have, um, a zoning, uh, ordinance text amendment for the IDO to the plan commission by their meeting in, probably their first or second meeting in July, but probably 30 days. But yeah, the 120 days would start once the IDO is, is adopted.
You said the IDO was used last in a, in what, for what purpose?
For the billboard moratorium.
I mean, but before, before the downtown, downtown to campus plan?
Yeah. The, in 1988, one was passed for a year's time while the downtown to campus plan was being created.
That was a long, extensive process, if I recall. I noticed that, uh, I mean, this is just an aside, maybe you can, it seems like, according to the numbers here, the owner-occupied homes are, amount to about 15% of the total homes or buildings or lots in that, in that total area. Is that right?
Uh, yeah.
15%?
Most of, I think there's, um, two, three, four, six along Green Street and the rest are on Elm.
So it's five on Green, according to your fact sheet, and nine on Elm.
Yeah, well, 609 West Green should have been circled and it, and it wasn't.
Oh, I see. Okay. That was your change?
Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are there further questions for staff? Ms. Rado?
I have a couple of quick questions. I just, I have one question about the chart you gave us on the development review board cases. Um, it doesn't show what the disposition was of the three cases that were 97. Were those all approved or do you know how those were disposed of?
Yeah, I believe they were. I just don't think those, our chart was finished up there.
Okay. Uh, the other question I have is how was this area zoned prior to being an MOR district?
Uh, I don't know for sure, Steve. Probably no, but I think it was, I would bet it was high-density.
Um, that's all the questions I have for now.
Are there other questions? Uh, then is there, um, a motion for direction? Ms. Patton?
Uh, thank you. I'll make the motion to, uh, this is the motion that the staff, uh, prepared in our packet, um, to direct staff to prepare an interim development ordinance to impose a 120-day moratorium on development activity within the mixed-office residential district, allowing city staff to propose revised regulations governing the district, allow the Urbana Plan Commission to conduct a public hearing on the revised regulations, and allow the city council to adopt the revised regulations by ordinance.
So.
So a motion by Ms. Patton, second by Mr. Hayes. Ms. Patton, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you. Uh, one thing I, I want to just mention in response to, uh, Mr. Whalen's questions as far as activity level, uh, about eight years ago, there was, uh, initially a, a proposal for redevelopment of 611 Green. At the time, it was a, um, a house that had been converted into five one-bedroom apartments and the proposal was, I believe for, well, it's one of the ones on the list here, I think it was for eight four-bedroom apartments. Um, and, um, uh, what the owner wanted to do with it required a variance, the application was made to zoning board of appeals for the variance and the zoning board of appeals denied it. So then, excuse me, so then the building was not developed. Um, sometime soon thereafter, I don't remember the exact year, Jim O'Malley bought what, the Ricker House and was going to tear it down, uh, and build an apartment building, I think also eight, uh, four-bedroom apartments. Uh, a group of people, actually, I think one generous, uh, anonymous donor and a group of people working with the Preservation and Conservation Association pulled together the money to buy the property from Mr. O'Malley. Uh, and he was, um, gracious enough to sell it. Uh, if you, I don't know if you remember what 612 West Green looked like before it was, um, uh, before it was remodeled and renovated, but it was, it was just in horrible, horrible shape. And one of the, the houses that might, well, you might look at and say, oh, this should just be torn down. But instead of being torn down, it was remodeled and now it's an historic landmark and an owner-occupied home and it's quite, quite beautiful. Uh, around the time that all this was going on, the, uh, mayor appointed a citizens' task force to look at the MOR district. There were concerns, uh, like some of the concerns expressed tonight about where we were going in this direction. And I mentioned also this in, in response to the, the comment from, um, for member of the public that this is something we should have worked on for a long time. Actually, this, I was, I served on that committee and we, um, met for at least 18 months, came up with a number of recommendations. It went before the plan commission. Plan commissioners had some problems with it, but didn't give a specific direction. Uh, they just sent it back to the staff. And it was soon after that when several of our planning staff left, if you remember that period in 1998 and 99, when, um, when we, uh, had one planner leave and another planner leave. And so the whole thing just sort of, um, got put on the back burner. Uh, part of, of what this is about, uh, is this motion is about bringing this back to the front burner to, to finish the work that was started, um, by our staff, uh, oh gosh, almost six years ago. I want to share a few comments from, uh, people who were not able to be here tonight. I, I received a lot of messages. There are just, just portions of three I'd like to share because I think they address well, uh, the concerns related to, uh, development in the mixed-office residential district. Uh, Liz Cardman, who lives on California, wrote, "The one truly unique characteristic of Urbana is that it has a viable residential neighborhood between an internationally-ranked university and a downtown, which happens to have a nationally-ranked public library undergoing a major expansion. There aren't many communities in the country that can claim that distinction." On the western northern fringes of this neighborhood... On the western northern fringes of this neighborhood, the spillover effect of greater density and commercial development has a corrosive effect on the nearby single-family neighborhood." And that, that is a concern. Steve Ross, who owns the home at 609 West Green, that was the one that on the map in our packet was not indicated as owner occupied, but in fact is, and his house happens to be located between two sites where apartments are going to be built despite the lack of, of development activity somewhat recently. We're now seeing a, well, at least two buildings go up at once, and perhaps this is the beginning of new interest in multifamily construction in the MOR district. Mr. Ross, his house is not going to be affected by anything we do now because it's already affected by, by these two developments. But he had pointed out in his message, and he spoke to us a couple of weeks ago, he said, "The effect of the MOR district spreads beyond Green to the backyards of those on the north side of High Street." I hope folks will consider that, this map doesn't show it, but most of the homes on the north side of High Street on, from Kohler East are owner occupied homes. And he says that he feels the current MOR district is failing in its intent of conservation, preservation, and reuse. I would have to agree with that. And a third message from Willard Broome, who lives on Nevada and Race, said, "Green Street represents a history of ambivalence, development versus preservation. I think the conversation taking place might be one of the last opportunities to set a direction on what will happen to the area in the future. I would urge heavy disincentives for any new construction that increases density on Green Street, and maybe a block or so in either direction. There are good and bad examples which can be used to develop guidelines for the future." Picking up on that last point, I think it's, it's very important that we have developments, more specific development guidelines for construction in the, in the MOR district. If you looked at the 13 criteria, or 13 or 14 criteria, yes, 13, sorry, 13 criteria that the Development Review Board is supposed to look at, most of those are requirements under the zoning ordinance anyway. There's one that really needs to be, have, well, fleshed out and be more specific, and that's number three, that says, "Will the location, orientation, setbacks, spacing, and placement of the structures harmonize with the surrounding neighborhood and minimize the impact of their use and bulk on adjacent properties?" If you look up and down Green Street, you will see some examples of multifamily housing, both old buildings that were built in the 20s and the new building that was built less than 10 years ago, that fit in well and are compatible with the surrounding uses. And while we looked at owner occupied, the count here on owner occupied, I'd like to point out, just on Green Street alone, there are, there are mostly single-family homes, actually, in this whole area, I think there are 40, in the whole MOR district, 48 single-family homes. The majority of them are not owner occupied, but the actual structures, there are single-family homes. And you look at some apartment buildings where you see just a few things that, that really make them fit in with, with single-family homes, like an entrance in the center of the building that's set back a little bit from the front line of the building. Some trim or a little detail under the windows or above the front door that just make it not a flat wall. The type, the, the type of material and the color of the material really makes a difference. There are a couple of buildings in the Green Street corridor that are modern, that skinny gray siding. I personally find them unattractive, and they really detract from the rest of those properties. One or two don't make that big a difference, but that's, in terms of the attractiveness of that corridor, the biggest fear that I have is that we'll have another half dozen to a dozen of those buildings going up in the next few years that are just pretty much ugly boxes, and I'm sure they'll bring in the, the rental income that the developers seek, but they have nothing else to offer the neighboring properties or the surrounding area. There are a lot of different, more specific things that we, that we can suggest, having to do with height of structures, placement and quality of front doors, as I mentioned, building materials and color, location of parking, and things like that, to try to, to maintain Green Street as an attractive corridor. And that's what I'm hoping will come out of the staff work if we approve, if we approve this moratorium for development of these new guidelines. So I would urge support of this motion, and if it passes, I am optimistically awaiting a, a good, helpful proposal from our, our planning staff.
Is there further discussion on the motion? Mayor Southway?
Yeah, just to echo some of the points that have been made that I think are important. One is the, the criteria that the Development Review Board has to use, and one part...
You were leaning on it. Not tonight.
Is it working now? No?
Here it is. How do you know? Now it's working.
Is it working now? Nope.
Everyone's but yours.
I'll just yell.
But the, one of the, the things that's really been kind of ironic about the Development Review Board is that one of the criteria is that they can look at how a new building harmonizes or is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, yet it specifically says that they can't look at architectural character and that type of thing in the design. Well, those seem to be diametrically opposed, in my mind, and so I think it's, it's an important thing that we need to change in this, is to allow the Development Review Board, whatever its future makeup will be, to consider some of those architectural criteria. I think Ms. Patton made a good point, and as we've been discussing this internally, you can identify some architectural features, pitched roofs, you know, a little more detail at the entry, some building materials and so forth, that can give even new construction a lot of character. And we've been able to, as a society, build what are handsome, single-family and multifamily buildings in the past, and our challenge is to be sure that we can do that in the future as well. Just because a building may be a little bigger or have a little higher density than the previous one, doesn't mean it has to be ugly. It can be very handsome. There are some examples, even in the adjacent neighborhood at the corner of Nevada and Kohler, there are two multifamily buildings on that corner, and they fit in with the neighborhood very nicely. But they're made of good materials, they, they fit in with the neighborhood, and they're not, you know, just row after row of them, they're isolated in these particular ones on the corner, which may make a difference. So there is a way to have new development that can fit in with the neighborhood. But we need to be given the tools so that we can review the, the design as those buildings are being proposed. So I think that's an important thing, and Mr. Weiner's point of, you know, we certainly don't want this moratorium to go for three years and stop any kind of development, but this process should be relatively short, a four to six month period, and I think that we can make a lot of headway in that, that time, and, and ultimately come up with guidelines that are going to help both developers and the people that live in the area. So I would encourage council members to support this moratorium.
Further discussion? Mr. Addo?
Yeah. I have several points. I'd like to begin by thanking the people who've taken the initiative to come and say we need to improve the MOR district. I think they're right. We're not accomplishing what we want to accomplish there, and we need to figure out what we can do to better have that district serve its purpose. One of the things that I'm, as I'm sitting here and trying to envision the process, it occurs to me is, we're going to send staff away and have them spend their time and then Planning Commission time, first drafting a moratorium for 120 days, and then come back and we'll adopt the moratorium, and then we'll go ahead and work on doing the revision. And, you know, half the time, it'll take 60 days to draft the ordinance, or maybe not 60 days, maybe 30 or 45 days for 120-day moratorium, given that there doesn't seem to be a whole lot happening in the district, maybe it would make more sense to just go straight to revising things and discussing what kind of changes we would like to see, and have staff and Planning Commission, you know, begin working on getting those changes in place that we can see the kind of changes in that district that, of the residents, and we want to see happen more quickly. The other thing is that we're sort of passing this resolution, and this doesn't give staff or the Planning Commission much of a sense of exactly what we're looking for. Mrs. Patton, I think, has made a number of very good points. Two of the members who aren't here tonight are Danielle Chenoweth and Laura Huth, both of whom take a, a very active interest in the development of these kinds of areas, and how you structure it so that it's smart and compatible with the surrounding areas. And I think they would have a lot of good input and insights into how we could revise this ordinance and improve it, and then both staff and the Planning Commission would have some sense of what we're looking for when they set about the task of revising the development ordinance. So I guess what I would suggest is that, why don't we go ahead and wait two weeks, and then go ahead and consider a motion to charge the staff to proceed directly with developing the, you know, coming up with changes based on the discussion here at City Council and the kind of changes we'd like to see so that we can go forward.
Is there further discussion?
A couple more comments.
Sorry.
I will go ahead and explain, I guess, what the relevance was of the questions I was asking about the tram. Most people are familiar with the various discussions that have been had about the tram, and I guess it's one of those things that is nice, but it will be very expensive. And even if we get massive government grants and state grants to pay for 75 or 80% of the cost of constructing it, you would still, depending on, and they're talking about nice round numbers at, at this stage of the process, but anywhere from $400,000 to 1.3 million as sort of the annual payment that Urbana would have to make on, on bond obligations to pay for its share of, of constructing the tram. To generate that kind of tax income at a property tax rate of a buck 31, you'd have to have EAV of 33 million to 100 million, and you would have to have an increase in the fair market value of properties in your tax base around the tram of 100 million to 300 million. And that's very substantial, and that's very dense. So I'm not going to argue that we should or we shouldn't have the tram, or that we ought to, you know, suddenly start constructing eight-story apartment buildings in this neighborhood to finance a tram. But I guess I would like for people who are watching the debate to think about some of the trade-offs and things that we have to consider here in City Council, whenever we figure out, how do you accomplish things and what can we afford to do as a city and what we can't afford to do. So with that, I'll go ahead and yield back the floor. And at the conclusion of the discussion, I'll move to defer this motion for two weeks that we can have input from Ms. Huth and Ms. Chenoweth.
Is there further discussion? Ms. Patton?
Thank you. This item was on the agenda two weeks ago, and as it happens, the two members who are absent tonight asked for it to be put off two weeks, and so that they could have more time to think about it. We could put it off two more weeks, and then we'll probably put it off indefinitely after that. I don't want to see that happen. Although the, I suppose, without looking at or thinking at much, at first blush, a moratorium might appear to be a delay, actually, the whole purpose of it is to speed things up. Having spent, and I don't, I don't recall, I don't think any of the people actually sitting in the audience here tonight were on that committee, but having spent a lot of my vacation time from my job, and I was not the only person on the committee having to do that, to attend meetings in the community development office, once or twice a month for a year and a half to come up with a proposal, it was very disappointing to me to see it just float to that large back burner where things can stay for a long, long time. I don't want to see this happening again, where we, we say, gee, we really need to deal with this, and then we start talking about it, and then there's talking and there's meetings, and nothing gets done. If we act now, we, as Mr. Kroski said, we'll probably see the ordinance at the Plan Commission the first week in, or the first meeting in July, and then we can get moving on this and expect to see a proposal this fall that we can act on. And I really would appreciate no, no further delay, and would encourage council members to vote against a motion to postpone consideration.
Is there further discussion? Mr. Whalen?
I, I have mixed feelings about this. I appreciate hearing from the people who came here, and it's really, in our thinking in this city, such a, an important thing, people's homes and the neighborhoods and the quality of life in our city. And yet, I see, I, I, the MOR was designed some years ago when April was in charge of the Department of Community Development.
I don't think April was director at that time. Bruce may have been the director of the department.
Bruce, were you director at the time the MOR was developed?
Might have been transition period, yeah.
I thought April was.
I don't know, we were both involved in it, I don't know.
You're both involved. Well, it, the idea at the time, excuse me, was that it was a compromise between development that was feared and trying to guide it and, and control it, so that it might add to the more commodious use of the properties included in that street. We have lost that whole area, I mean, aside from the little building that's being built, it's 20,000 square feet over on the campus. We, compared to the campus town in Champaign, Urbana has the closest proximist, proximate land not open to development, commercial development. It seems to me that developing the downtown to campus plan had not, as one of its main proponents, the idea of economic development that would tie in the university with the downtown of Urbana. People call, that suggests that the tram system would be a nice addition because it would directly provide people with quick service and continuous service between the downtown and the campus. And that might be, unfortunately, the expense of it is such a, a great number, I can't possibly seeing it, see it happening. And particularly, I can't see it being paid for by the property tax of single-family homes. I think that in this case, we see 15% of the properties calling for the MOR being put on or, or being reviewed and redesigned. The thing that I also hear as an undercurrent is the conservation and restoration... The thing that I also hear as an undercurrent is the conservation and restoration criteria becomes more restrictive in the development of this at the, after the IDEO and the, what is it, the, the board of design people come up with some kind of a better MOR. I don't see the outcome of this being, meeting that need for what we need most of all is economic development. We have to protect residential development, or residential neighborhoods too, but we have to remember that we have a need for, along certain routes in town, a certain need for development. Of course, unfortunately, there has been no rush to develop this, as we've seen, and I'm not sure that there will be in the future. What I do see happening is that there will be more of a restriction coming out of this process of IDEO and MOR, moratorium. So I don't support this. I think that we have developed this MOR as a compromise to begin with. I think what we need to concentrate on is developing it. And so that's where I stand.
Is there further discussion?
I'd like to just say a few things. I am a little concerned about, Mr. Whalen has repeated twice now that there's no rush, no development, but we've seen actually two developments, two proposals in the last month or month and a half. And so I think there is a sense of urgency here, and that's probably what caused not 15 people, but 189 people in our community to sign a petition in a matter of a few days requesting that the city implement a moratorium. And we received that, I believe, two weeks ago when the item was on the committee agenda for the first time at that point. Mr. Weiner had expressed concern about delays or how long a moratorium would last, and I agree with, I think Ms. Pat stated that, pointed out that if we were to postpone consideration of this issue and put it off for another two weeks or who knows how much longer, that would further postpone and, I think, make, it would further postpone what Mr. Weiner, it would, I'm sorry, would further postpone this issue and, I think, cause further delays that are unnecessary. I have had conversations with, or emails from Ms. Chenoweth, who, despite some of the emails in the last couple of days being about council issues, none of them were concerned about, gosh, I'm not here, I'm not going to be here Monday night, can you please postpone this moratorium or anything like that? I think that, so I didn't feel any sense of concern about this. I talked with Ms. Huth on Saturday, and she didn't, I didn't know at the time, and I'm not sure she knew at the time, she wasn't going to be able to be here tonight, but she certainly didn't express any desire to make sure that her vote was here, was heard tonight, or that she be allowed, again, to be able to be here. Hopefully, she's going to get a tape of this meeting so she can hear the discussion or people in the audience perhaps were able to share their concerns with her as well so that when this issue is next discussed in, when this issue next comes back to council, those who were absent will be able to be here. I guess I do worry about when one or two council members aren't here that we postpone issues. You know, if we would have postponed last week, Mr. Whalen and Mr. Otto weren't here, but we went on, and I think if there's, that the city doesn't need to stop when one or two council members aren't here. I think that, again, because this is an issue that, I think Ms. Chenoweth had asked that we postpone this for two weeks, and I believe she was aware she would be out of town for this meeting, when she had requested this, said that I don't see the need, because of their absence, to postpone this discussion. I think that they have heard a lot of comments from members of the public, including their constituents, about this, and will be able to participate in this issue as the issue continues, as other decisions about this issue continue. That's all I have to say. Other further comments? Mr. Whalen?
I think Milton had his hand up.
Oh, Mr. Otto?
Are you suggesting that Ms. Chenoweth asked it to be postponed two weeks so she could study it more knowing that she would be out of town when it eventually was voted on?
No, I didn't mean to imply that. I'm saying that she, in her discussions with me, in her emails back to me this, in the last couple of days on council issues, there wasn't any email or any indication of, please put off the MOR vote because I need to be here, or any sort of concern or anything like that. And so I guess unless you've spoken with her and she requested that this be put off because she isn't able to be here tonight, I'm not sure that I otherwise would read into, read her absence into the idea that this should be postponed for two weeks because she wasn't able to come tonight. That's all.
Mr. Otto, anymore?
No, no, that's all.
Mr. Whalen?
The, it's interesting. I saw the petition and looked at it. A number of people don't even live near this street, 189 people. We're talking about 15 or, let's see, 14 homeowners.
Fifteen.
As part of that area that would be affected. And listening to those folks, it's very difficult to say, you know, your home is going to be jeopardized or the quality of your home. I don't feel comfortable with that either. And for that reason, I'm inclined to say, okay, well, let's do the moratorium, because I consider that sacred, sacred area, as far as citizens are concerned. But to use this petition as people that live on combs and grig and areas that are not even close proximity to this is really not right. But I also question, see, part of the petition says that any redevelopment in the MOR district be governed by specific design criteria and limitations on zoning density to maintain the historic feel. When we talked about the types of doors and the windows and the inlets and the nice qualities of architecture, that's very close to the preservation and restoration criteria that we have not approved a widespread use in this area. I mean, it hasn't been brought up, it hasn't been mentioned, nobody has put their house up for inclusion. So I see my vote here being, not really counting in the full weight of things, and that, I'm used to that. But I do think that the idea should be heard and expressed, that is to say that what we need in this city is economic development. And this is not a bad place to have it. If it's done in a graceful way, and the MOR was a method of doing it in a graceful way to include residents, offices, and commercial use. We have seen the university narrow Springfield to the point where it is, creates traffic jams going down there. It's a, we let ourselves walk right into that. The university controls that. We see what's happened to Green Street and what will continue to happen, the restriction. Both of those streets come right into our downtown area. The city needs economic development, and I think, unfortunately, this area is one that would, I think, suit the purpose very well with the MOR, without the restrictions that we're talking about, with an architect supposedly appointed to say, well, I think what we need is some kind of bric-a-brac on the porches, and we need stained glass windows in the doors, and we need perhaps something or other like that. I mean, that's a little banal, I know, and that's not what's going to happen, but we don't need more restrictions on development. We need economic development. So I'm not going to vote for this.
Further discussion? Okay, Mr. Otto?
I'll move to postpone further consideration of the motion until the next meeting of the committee of the whole, two weeks from now.
Is that mandatory if we do it this way?
No, it would require, as I understand it, Mr. Otto's motion would require a second and then a, after discussion, a majority vote. If it receives a majority approval, then it would be on the next committee agenda.
I know the feeling not to get a second, and it's not very warming, heartwarming, so I'll give Mr. Otto a second.
There's a motion to postpone this for two weeks or to set this to, I'm sorry, to the next committee agenda with a second by Mr. Whalen is their discussion. Mr. Otto?
Yeah. I don't want to delay things or tie things up unnecessarily, but I think one of the good points of the Urbana City Council is that we always do make sure that everybody has a chance to speak and everybody has a chance to be heard, both in the public and also on city council. And in view of the fact that the two people aren't here, had previously asked that they have an opportunity to study this further, I think that it's not, you know, a routine vote on a controversial issue that, on a non-controversial issue that could, you know, reasonably be expected to pass without discussion or comment. So I guess that's the first reason I would urge members to support my motion, is the interests of collegiality. The second reason is, in our own interests, I think our own decision-making is improved when we hear viewpoints specifically. I can think of at least two instances involving zoning and development decisions where I came to city council thinking I would vote one way, and after hearing Ms. Chenoweth's discussion and arguments, realized that the better course was to vote another way, and it was a course that was more consistent with my own principles of smart growth. So I actually would like to hear what she has to say on this, as well as what Mrs. Huth has to say. I think we'll make a better, more informed decision. We may very well make the same decision and go ahead and approve Ms. Pat's motion, but I think it's worth doing right, since the whole purpose of this is to improve the MOR district and try to fix some of the problems that it currently has.
Is there further discussion? Ms. Pat?
Quickly, there will be numerous opportunities in this process for council members to express their opinions and for the public to express their opinions once there is a proposal from the staff in the form of a plan case, and then there will be discussion in planning commission and here at city council. The motion tonight is just to get the ball rolling, and I would urge no further delay in getting the ball rolling. There's really not a lot to debate until we have a proposal before us, and this will bring that proposal before us sooner rather than later.
Further discussion? Okay. Oh, Mr. Whalen?
I'd just like to add something to Mr. Milton. I'm not terribly in favor of postponing this for the participation of Ms. Chenoweth and Ms. Huth. They requested that, and we know how they feel. I mean, I don't personally think smart growth is anything but a euphemism for restricted So I think, I mean, it's controlled growth, smart growth, we can control it with our thinking. At the same time, I do think, though, in the name of collegiality, whether I disagree with them or agree with them, it would be nice to give them the opportunity to voice their opinion. I think it would probably be even more restrictive, but at least they deserve that opportunity. So I will vote with Mr. Milton on this, with Mr. Otto, I mean, excuse me.
Further discussion? If I can just say, then, before we vote, in response to Mr. Otto's proposal, I'll be voting against his motion to postpone this consideration. The last time I checked my email was around 6:30, around 7 o'clock this evening, and again, there was no message, no concern at, when I've received emails from Ms. Chenoweth over the last several days on this, or when I spoke with Ms. Huth on Saturday, that they were concerned or wanted to vote a certain way on this, or that if they weren't, for some reason, able to come, that this was an issue. They definitely wanted to be able to vote on this, whether to support this, what, two sen, or one-sentence motion on an interim development ordinance that would be proposed tonight. And as Ms. Pat has mentioned, this is an issue, this is not the only time we're going to see the MOR issue. In fact, several members, the members of the public have come, at least some, as we've had this now, twice on the agenda, and given up several hours of their time to come and speak. And I think, too, that we should also consider their time in looking at whether we're going to postpone this for another two weeks, that they should come back and speak again to council, in addition to the emails and phone calls and letters, as well as public participation that they've made. And so I think that without the, without such requests from Ms. Huth or Ms. Chenoweth, that they, that council defer or postpone any consideration on this or other council agenda items because of their planned or unforeseen absence, I'm not, I don't support that. And for that reason, I'll be voting against this, Mr. Otto's proposal. Any further discussion? Okay, the motion on the table is to, or the motion on the floor is to postpone, to postpone until the next committee item, the vote on this prepared, or the interim development ordinance motion for council consideration that Mr. Otto proposed. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye, excuse me.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, that fails. Now the main motion by Ms.
Do we have a roll call on that, just for the sake of the history?
Would the clerk please call the roll?
No.
No.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Oh. Okay, that fails, 3-2. Now the main motion on the floor is the motion made by Ms. Pat and second by Mr. Hayes. Is there further discussion on this motion? Again, it's the attachment number one that was on, that was in everyone's packet. Without further discussion.
Oh, Ms. Whalen.
Mr. Otto?
Yeah. I'd just like the opportunity to explain the vote I'm about to cast. I do support revising the MOR ordinance and improving it. I'm not persuaded that going about with a moratorium is the best way to do that at this time, so for that reason, I'll be voting no.
Further discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
No, maybe we'll roll call, please.
Oh, we'll call, Mr. Whalen requests a roll call, please.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes. That passes 3-2. Thank you, Mr. Kralinski. Next is item number six, resolution number 2003-06-014R, a resolution asserting prevailing wages 2003 to 2004. Legal staff? Mr. Holt?
Yes, well, if you're looking for something quick and easy, here it is. It's a routine matter required by state law for the municipality to ascertain the prevailing wages. This is for all public works constructed by a public body for public use. The figures that are appended to the motion are figures taken and taken from and determined by the Illinois Department of Labor, which is our typical source for those things. Essentially, our only other choice on this matter would be to try to do a survey and obtain those, to determine those figures ourselves, be highly duplicative and basically a complete waste of time. It is mandated by state law that we do some kind of declaration on prevailing wages, and this is the traditional method by which the city of Urbana has done it.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Yes.
Sure, Mr. Whalen.
Please, thank you. I just wondered, this is something that's confused me, I wonder, what is exactly the prevailing wage? What is the guideline for it?
I'm not certain the precise criteria. That's my understanding.
You know, there's a book that the contractors use in estimating jobs, and it gives cost of labor for different things like brick masons, and I'm wondering how this relates to that.
I don't know what, what book you might be talking about.
It's a standard estimator's book, but, boy, they, some of these salaries are pretty handsome.
There are further questions? Oh, I'm sorry, you?
Well, excuse me, I, I'm wondering just, you know, do the unions play into this? Do they, do the, are the unions use it as guideline?
Well, to the extent that there's, that there's organized labor on projects that qualify for this mandate, that these prevailing wages be paid on public works constructed by a public body for public use, yeah, to the extent, to that extent, I suppose, unions do use them. I don't know internally what a, what a union does or doesn't do, how they determine what kinds of wages that they demand in particular areas. I just, this is a state mandated determination. Now, the City of Urbana could go ahead and take, undertake its own survey on these things, but, you know, obviously a complete waste of time for us and money.
No, it's a time, no, and I, and I have nothing against it if the unions are, you know, used as a basis for this. I mean, I think that the unions have been responsible for a lot of increases in our cost of liv- or standard of living, so I'm not, I don't find that to be so terrible. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there further questions? If not, a motion would be in order. Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Pat, second by Mr. Hayes. Do we need this to go to council?
Yes.
Send this to council. Is there any discussion, is there discussion on this issue? Okay, would all in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Holtz. Item number seven is our next agenda item, ordinance number 2003-06-056, an ordinance approving a second amendment to a certain Urbana home consortium community housing development organization agreement with Homestead Corporation Rental Project Fiscal Year 2001-2002. Mr. Gruy?
Thank you. Yes, this evening, we have an amendment, second amendment to a agreement, a CHODO agreement with Homestead Corporation. Jim Rose from Homestead is here to answer questions as well. A little bit of background, December of '01, we entered into a CHODO agreement with Homestead along with some of our Urbana allocation funding as well as some home CHODO funding. The idea was to create two rental, affordable rental units in Urbana and one in Champaign. The following year, in December '02, we amended that agreement, extending the termination date to June 30 of this year and increasing the number of units from two to six in, here in Urbana. To date, Homestead's purchased their one property as planned in Champaign and four here in Urbana. In recent months, we've had conversations with Homestead indicating, for a number of reasons, they were experiencing difficulty in, in finding these last two units, you know, and their memo notes the real estate market in general escalating costs and trying to find the units that meet their criteria, as well as changes to their financing arrangements. Homestead shared that their banking arrangements are a little different now and going through commercial lending arrangements, which are different than what they used in the past, and there certainly their business plan in offering lower rents to certain populations sort of affects their ability to, to pay what might be necessary for a business model that the banking industry might, might entertain. Considering all that, the amendment proposes that we would lower the, the number of units purchased back down to four, and then certainly forego the extra two units and simply return the balance of money, $35,000, to the consortium's home account. And that funding could be used for other home-eligible projects, housing-related projects. A little bit more background, the Home Consortium Technical Committee, basically the staff of Champaign County, Champaign City, and Urbana reviewed this and felt that it was appropriate. If Homestead was having these difficulties, shouldn't be pressed into making, making those purchases happen. Community Development Commission discussed the matter in their April '22 meeting, a different version of this, but the similar matter, and on May 27, while they didn't have a quorum on May 27, they did reflect favorable comments they wanted to share with council. So staff recommends approval of this and be happy to answer questions as well as Mr. Rose.
Is there any, are there any questions for staff or for Mr. Rose?
Just one quick one, when would we, if we approve this, when would we have to make a decision on the 35,000, whatever it's, 35,500 being reprogrammed?
Good point. Normally, we would do that in the amendment process because that money was in the annual action plan for '01, we would amend that '01 AAP and put it into a, a project maybe this year or a new project. So probably in the fall, that August-September amendment period, when we go back and revisit, the AAP would be good.
Thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Rose, do you have anything you'd like to say to council? We appreciate you coming tonight.
As an out-for-profit developer, we don't like giving money back to the city for any particular reason, but in this case, we felt that, and our board felt, that was most appropriate because of the, the problems that we were experiencing in purchasing homes in the housing market here in Urbana. A few years ago, we were able to buy four-bedroom homes in relatively good neighborhoods in Urbana for under $80,000. We cannot find homes now under, under $100,000, and more likely, we would be spending close to $125,000 for a, for a bedroom home, and we just don't think that's appropriate at this time to, to invest that much money in an affordable housing unit that's going to be rented to a low-income person. We don't, so I think what we're going to have to, what we're going to do is we're going to do a moratorium. Our board, our board just decided to not, not to buy any more homes for our rental program right at this current time. And we'll probably be facing the same problem a year from now, and we may have to come back to the city council because we have, we have money obligated in next fiscal year's budget for that program to the tune of about $110,000. And we also have $40,000 of home consortium money that we were going to use to buy two homes in Champaign, and more than likely, we'll have to return that money as well. We don't, again, we don't like to do it. What I, what the Homestead Board and the staff would like to do is sit down with the consortium and maybe decide, and figure out something that Homestead could get involved in other than our rental program and use that money more effectively. So that's, that's our intention.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Rose?
Just a comment, thanking Mr. Rose and the folks at Homestead Corporation. They're doing a difficult job in the community, and they're doing it very well, so, thanks.
And one other thing is, we did get started on our digging the foundation for our first home in needs, the Lincoln subdivision, and we hope to be on schedule and have those, all those homes completed by September 30, and the homebuyers are really excited, and we're excited to participate in that program, and it's something we, we could hopefully do again in the future for the city, so.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Okay, with no further discussion, a motion would be in order.
Move to send the ordinance to city council with recommendation for approval.
Motion by Ms. Pat.
Second.
Second by Mr. Otto. Is there further discussion on the agenda item? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That passes, we'll see that at the next council meeting. Next is item number eight, ordinance number 2003-06-057, an ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Urbana, 2506 East Washington Street. Mr. Kowalski?
Oh, thanks. Really no staff reports, pretty straightforward annexation of what will be Sunny Estates subdivision. I'll take any questions you might have.
Are there questions for staff? If you don't mind, I've got one question. Do you know about what the price range for the houses that'll be developed is 28 lot, it's a 28 lot, single-family residential development? What are the, what's the price range you expect?
Um, I can't say for sure. Last I talked with the developer, they were going to be generally affordable homes around $100,000 or less.
Okay. Great. And it'll all be single-family, no duplex or anything?
Right.
Okay. Further questions? Mr. Whalen?
You say $100,000 or less?
That was the last indication the developer gave, yes.
Three-bedroom homes?
I don't know how many bedrooms. I would assume they'd be three. The lots aren't very big, the homes won't be very big. I think they'll be on, they will be on slabs, so there will not be basements.
Sure.
I don't, I don't know about garages, I don't have those kind of details. The subdivisions will be reviewed by the Plan Commission, and we'll come back to you in the next few weeks, so the developer will be able to answer more questions about it at that time.
After some review, there will be more review.
Yeah, of the subdivision.
Thank you.
Further discussion or questions? Not a motion would be in order?
Move to send approval to council.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Ms. Pat. Further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That passes, we'll see that at a council. Next item is number nine, ordinance number 2003-06-058, an ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Urbana, 1702 North Cunningham Avenue. Mr. Kowalski?
Again, just briefly, this is exercising an agreement that we've had with the Shamrock Tavern to annex them in, and we welcome them to the city if you pass this ordinance.
Are there any questions for staff? Is there a motion?
Move to send the ordinance to city council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Pat, second by Mr. Hayes. Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes, we'll see that at a council. Thank you, Mr. Kowalski. The next item is item number 10, Water Company Franchise Background Information Presentation by Legal and Executive Staff. Mr. Walden?
Thank you. We would like to continue the discussion that we started a couple of weeks ago regarding Illinois American Water Company franchise agreement continuation, and before I get into that, I would like to recognize Barry Suits, he's with Illinois American Water Company, and he's in the audience and indicated to me he'd be available to answer any questions if you, if you have questions at this time. We're just underway, I guess, in terms of preliminary negotiations with the water company regarding the franchise agreement. We provided you last time some background information that was put together primarily by Champaign legal staff. This week, we provided another big stack of information. Sorry about all the paper. Whenever you say you're going to go paperless, the first thing that happens is you have to distribute something as massive as this. But what we tried to put together for you was some of the background information on the Urbana agreements, and just, just as history, the initial franchise agreement, there's an excellent memo that I found in my file from Ken Beth from the 1980s that has a chronology of our agreements with the water company. It was first occurred in 1912, was our first agreement. Prior to that, there was no agreement, there were private arrangements, and that first agreement for us was for a term of 30 years. That expired in 1942, of course, in 1942, World War II was going on, and for whatever reason, we just ignored it until the ICC came up with a plan to assess for fire service protection charges, and that happened in about 1983. At that point, the two cities joined together in a lawsuit, to make a long story short, there was a temporary agreement that was, that lawsuit was settled, there was a temporary agreement in 1985, followed by discussions over a couple of year period, a few-year period, to the current agreement, which was put in place in May 1989 and expires on April 30, 2004. April 30, 2004 is not that far away. So we're underway in terms of our discussions. What you have in your packet are the, some of those memos of information regarding our agreement, and then a copy of the actual agreement and some of the correspondence to the water company. So primarily, the franchise agreement is, is, is an agreement, there's many, many matters in here, but primarily, it's an agreement to use our right-of-way for the water distribution system. Also provided you with the notice that we received in January of American Water's purchase by TENS Water Company, which is a division of RWE. There is some background information that we received from the company on RWE that we thought would be helpful to you, facts and figures and corporate description. There was some discussion last time at the council, had some interest in what happened in Pekin, and we pulled for you all of the Daily Times archives from Pekin over a year period of all the newspaper articles regarding their, the purchase of the water company in Pekin. And then finally, we did pull together some information, miscellaneous information that's out there regarding some of the trends and some of the things that have happened in terms of water companies and issues pro and what privatization and those against privatization. And we also pulled together a little bit of information on some of the rate issues that are currently before the ICC. So that, and then finally, there's some state statutes that govern us controlling that. And then one final, one final piece was, and I think this is pretty much the same letter that appeared in the op-ed piece of the News Gazette from, from, from David Baker, maybe slightly changed to just address, title it to Urbana, but is basically sort of his take on some of the discussion that happened two weeks ago at the Champaign City Council meeting. It's, I wouldn't say it's a rebuttal, it's a, his view of it, necessarily rebuttal. So that is the information that you have as, as background, and I know there's a lot, and I apologize for that, but there's a lot to learn. We have started this process, and probably the thing to do now is talk a little bit about what we see happening. At this point, we, Steve and myself, will be involved with a couple of members, Champaign Legal and City Manager, in, in pursuing these discussions. At some point, I think that we're going to need a couple of things. One, it would seem appropriate that we find some way to have some public comment. I don't know if we do that jointly or we do that independently, but there probably needs to be some process put in place where we can solicit input from the public regarding some of the issues relative to this franchise agreement. That's sort of a loose end, and we're going to be working with City of Champaign to see how they would like to pursue that. Another, I guess, another issue that, another point that we need to discuss is, is really a discussion of the major issues and which things that we feel are important in, in this go-around. I did give you a list, a very comprehensive list of all issues that we could think of that you had in the last packet. What I'd like to do is maybe turn it over to Steve and, and go through some of the major issues as we see them that will be points of discussion as we move forward. So why don't I just turn that, this portion of it over to Steve?
Thanks, Bruce. Before I touch on that, I want to add one thing to what Bruce said, which is that besides just the City of Urbana and the City of Champaign, we'll be looking to see with the University of Illinois and possibly another municipality or two, there has been some expression of interest from them on participating in this, and so we'll see to what extent they want to do that and to what extent that'll work out. That's all part of the preliminary exploration that we're doing right now. The issues, as Bruce said, there are a lot of them out there. It seems to us that, at least initially, there's, there's a few that really jump out as being really important. First of all, there's the term, that is, the length of the agreement, maintaining water quality, protecting the local water resources, compensation to the municipalities for use of the right-of-way, infrastructure and capital development by the water company itself, rates, always very important, and then lastly, the, an option of some sort of option. quality, protecting the local, uh, water resources, um, compensation to the municipalities for use of the right-of-way, um, infrastructure and capital, uh, development by the water company itself, um, rates, always very important. And then lastly, the, uh, an option of, some sort of option to purchase and method of valuation, methodality of, of approaching that sort of scenario. I think those are the, essentially, the, the top items that we see at this point, and obviously, uh, as time goes by, we may add some or, uh, or find some others that, uh, on our longer list, that are, uh, that jump out as being equally significant. And, uh, we look forward in the next, uh, year or so, as this process goes through, to, uh, hearing the council's views, uh, learning what council members think is important, and obviously, of course, what the citizenry and the community and the other stakeholders, holders think, uh, is important in this matter.
Anything else to report, or should we go over to questions?
Good questions.
Are there questions for staff? Mr. Whalen?
Do you have a, a list, is that list included in this packet?
Uh, Mr. Whalen, that was included in, uh, in the packet that was, uh, provided two weeks ago.
Yeah, I'll get it for you, Joe.
Okay.
It was kind of buried in the middle, and even though it was one of the most important things in there, it kind of did get shuffled into the center of it there.
I, I probably have that right here, but, uh, let me see if I don't have.
I'll get you another one.
And, and one more thing, too. In this blizzard of paperwork you've gotten, we have also obtained, I actually got it from my counterpart at the city of Champagne, Fred Stevens, um, a copy of the official file of the Illinois Commerce Commission and, uh, and the city of Pekin matter that Mr. Walden mentioned a moment ago, where Pekin is, uh, is, uh, contemplating, or actually seeking condemnation of the water system in that community. We'll have that for you as well to review.
Thank you. Are there further questions? Mr. Whalen?
I, I noticed, uh, I noticed the, um, the letter that we received that says that the aquifer, um, belongs to the people, but the, uh, the substructure, the, uh, the infrastructure belongs, will belong to the company that owns it, which would be Thames, or Thames, if you will, uh, water, water company? Which, of course, is the pumping and the treatment and the whole, I mean, that's how we get to the water.
Yes, and the delivery system.
The delivery system. So there is no water without their compliance and without this, a franchise agreement, if you will.
Well, that's, that's an interesting question, exactly how that works out, uh, and I'm sure it's one that we'll be exploring. Apparently, for, for quite a few years, actually decades, there was no franchise agreement at all. Uh, that's not something that we will contemplate happening here again. But certainly during that period, there was water, and there was a water company and a water delivery system.
Yeah. Was, and it was a lo, was it a local company that owned it?
I don't remember the name of the company. It was N I W C, which is...
We were, we were owned by National Enterprises Incorporated.
By who?
National Enterprises Incorporated.
Where are they?
They were headquartered out of St. Louis, Missouri.
Where?
St. Louis, Missouri.
St. Louis? Is the Thames Company, uh, of German ori, or, or, um, origin? And are they selling our water, the water from the aquifer in a bottled, for bottling outside of this area?
Not to my knowledge.
No.
And that, it was reported somewhere that it was being sold for bottling outside of this area?
Uh, not from our company. There are bottling companies in and around the county, including Paxton and Ford County that grow water from the aquifer.
Uh-huh.
But they are not, uh, Illinois American Water or Thames.
I see, and they don't have a contract with you folks to buy the water?
No, not, not that I'm aware of.
My understanding is they have their own wells, and they're...
Oh.
They're able to tap into the aquifer beneath their own property.
I see. This, this aquifer, the Mohammed Teas?
I don't know.
I'm not sure which aquifer they're in.
Yeah, I, I don't know either. I, I know there are other, there's very limited regulation on who can grow a well in Mohammed Teas aquifer, source of supply side. So they certainly could tap into the aquifer, uh, for themselves. I'm not really informed which, which company, you know, the brand will be following.
I see. That's, uh, I wonder, it was reported, I don't know where I read that, but probably the New York Times. Uh, boy, this Thames Waters global presence is something else. Looking at this, uh, this, I mean, they owned, they control the water throughout the world. They want to shut off those spigot wine and cheese and do it. You see that? I mean, is that, is that what this means? Major projects over this? Is that possible?
Well, you know what? That's not a, it, there are locations within that. It's not all, not all of them.
So the Soviet, uh, the ex-Soviet Socialist Republic, they're going to have to beg for water.
I think...
Excuse me, I'm just, let me continue if you will, please. I'm sorry. For you. Has there been discussion to, between Champagne and Urbana and other, any other towns in the county to buy this water company?
There have been no formal discussions at this point. There's, there has, uh, my understanding is that this Champagne City Council members have, uh, did some pretty probing questioning at one of their council meetings several weeks ago about that, but there has been no formal discussions about that between the cities.
No formal discussion.
Right.
Is there a willingness of the company to sell it if there is an interest in buying it?
We haven't spoken about, about that with them yet either.
I see. And I go, suppose you're ready to say, or that there might be an interest in selling it?
I think that that letter from David Baker addresses the issue.
Addresses the issue? Is, uh, is there, um, a possibility of this being a source of revenue for the cities? Like water companies have been in some other towns in the past?
Oh, I mean, I think there is the possibility of it. I, I think what, what some, um, municipalities are able to pay their costs and, you know, maybe generate a small profit for, uh, at which they can do whatever they choose to. They can reinvest in the water system itself, they can, I don't know, some of them may, um, subsidize sewer projects with income from, um, the water bills and so forth, but decision, uh, municipality, once it had the company. Certainly. Well, I think the big thing is, is, you know, control of the water company and the water service is the main municipalities are interested in.
I think that, excuse me for prolonging this, but the, the people that I talked to in the city, there is, it is an expressed interest in the question of who owns the water company, who owns the aquifer, who owns the, uh, the substructure or the, uh, infrastructure that...
Controls the supply.
And then the question, me and from a number of citizens, why don't we just buy the, I mean, well, they don't understand the complexities of the two cities working together and the university being a part of it and, and all, but, uh, there is a res, a reticence here, I think, to, uh, jump to any conclusions or make any suggestion that there is, uh, any interest at foot. I'm just curious to know these, I'm asking these questions in place of the people who have asked them of me.
Further questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Hayes?
Yeah, I just want to ask you a question. You know, most people are cities or companies, they do not get into the utility business because of, you know, high fixed cost. And so I'm wondering, what would be the advantage of, uh, persons, purchasing of a water system when it will cost a substantial amount of money?
Well, um, we haven't explored the pros and cons in detail of, of an acquisition. We have not discussed it at all with the company, um, other than a very preliminary couple of comments about it. There are a lot of factors involved in, in moving forward with such a scheme. There would be a tremendous amount of due diligence that we would have to do in our part to determine, uh, whether the advantages of an acquisition, which are basically not paying for dividends or profits or taxes, would offset the value of control and, uh, the, the cost of the, of the, of the infrastructure. You know, pricing of the infrastructure would be the major issue, I think. You know, what are the assets worth? And how would it be valued? That would be a major issue, but I must tell you, we have not gone down that path at this point. And I guess that's one of the initial reasons that we wanted to get some of these issues on the table, is to, to see, you know, what, what issues are important to the city council? Um, you know, if the council directs us, you know, we'd like to see you explore at least preliminarily the pros and cons, we'll do that. Uh, but it is a complex, very complex, uh, proposition, and, uh, I'm not sure that we could do an adequate job without outside help of analyzing that.
Well, the reason, the reason I ask is because, uh, things that the lease comes up 2004. And part of that lease, you said, is a possibility of, uh, option to purchase. Now, will it just have option to purchase in there, or will it have the details on what?
Well, if we were to pursue that, we just identified that as an issue because that has come up, um, obviously came up on the other side of Wright Street. Uh, and we listed that as an issue, and, you know, obviously, if that's something that were to be negotiated, there'd be a lot of details in it.
I just thought I'd ask the question.
No, I think it's a great question. All these questions are great, and in fact, we don't have an answer to many of them at this point.
Ms. Pat?
Thank you. We are getting asked questions from constituents. You don't need to apologize for asking your questions, Mr. Whalen. I think that, um, we've all been getting a lot of similar questions, uh, and perhaps because in Champagne, they, they started discussing the, or at least raised the, the possibility of a municipally-owned water company. I've been hearing from Urbana residents asking, are we going to buy the water company? I think it would be helpful for council members if we had something, a little, not as, uh, at this point, not as detailed as would be needed if we're actually going to do it, but maybe just a little bit more than what was in Steve Carter's 1989 memo, just about pros and cons of, uh, of municipal-owned water. I'm, the, the main concern, I've heard from several people, is about our waters, protecting our water supply. And I think it's, it's interesting that, um, I've mostly, personally, I can't really think of what I've heard, consumer complaints about water, the water company per se, it seems like it was a pretty positive thing, but there, there is some concern, uh, part of some people, I'm not sure if it's because we're discussing this, that, that now they're raising that issue, or if there are other reasons, but, but concerned about protecting our water supply. And there's definitely something going on out there, people being concerned about our water being, um, the level in the aquifer falling because of the water being diverted elsewhere, and whether they're concerned about being bottled up by, by more companies and, and sold, or, um, or by the water company, uh, using our water supply for other communities, I don't know, but that's, that's one of the concerns I would like to hear addressed more. I'm also, um, just curious about the, the whole intergovernmental relationship. We're mentioning Champagne and the university, um, there, what about the other, um, communities in, um, in Champagne County? What, um, what roles would they have in, in any, um...
I, I'm not totally certain about Savoy's arrangement with, in a, with, with American Water. Um, the other smaller towns have bulk purchase contracts, um, basically that... There's constructed, uh, water mains to, to Philo and Tolono and other places, and they have their own distribution systems. In fact, in the paper this weekend, there was an article about Philo considering selling its distribution system. It needs a new water tower and spinning that off. So, um, but, uh, we're not absolutely certain as to the relationships, um, with all of the others, and, and again, the University of Illinois is the same, is a similar, they're more of a bulk water purchaser. They have their own hydrants, they have their own everything over there, uh, and they're, they're basically a bulk water purchaser. They own the distribution system already. So, um, there, there are various, uh, uh, methods, or, or, I wouldn't say methods, various arrangements, um, with the, with the current American Water Company for either distribution, bulk oil, or bulk purchase, uh, agreements, or, uh, we're not even certain about some of the others. And maybe, maybe Barry, you know that, and would you want to address that now?
Yeah, I, I don't know the exact term on our franchise agreements. Savoy, we have franchise agreements with St. Joe, Illinois, and, uh, U of I, Champagne, Savoy, that have, some of them differ expiration dates. I know yours, particularly in Champagne, expired the same day. We have bulk water sale agreements with some of the other communities Bruce mentioned, including the U of I, that have various termination dates as well, or dates for renewal, if you will. So, uh, they're very, the agreements and content are very similar. The dates or the terms of those agreements vary.
Well, if, um, I guess, if there's, I, I'm understanding there's some coordination between our, our staff and Champagne's as far as what they're interested in looking into. I do think that whatever we're doing, we should have some good cooperation between the two cities, and if, uh, if you could keep us posted on, on development, that, I think that, that's really important. Not that we just want to follow whatever Champagne's doing, but I think we should be in this together.
I think our recent history is, is we don't, but we, on this matter, on this matter, I think that, um...
It makes sense.
It makes a lot of sense, and that's been our history, um, at least for the last 20 years, and so we, we intend to pursue that. Uh, but more than, more so than keeping you posted, I, I do think that we're going to have to have some input from council members on the issues that we believe are important. And I know there's two research items that are out there just from tonight, and that is a little more detail, not a complete analysis, but a little more detail on the pros and cons of municipal ownership versus privatization, and then, um, issues that really, we, we haven't really approached, uh, in detail yet on, uh, protection of the aquifer and, you know, what happens if a Pekin plant is located here or there? Is there really, I, I don't know that we, uh, are competent to do the research and all of that, but we'll, we'll, uh, we'll get you what we can.
So are there further questions for staff? Mr. Whalen?
Just a further comment. You know, when we were working on that, um, Solid Waste Disposal Association some years ago, you know, garbage, we, uh, got some discussion about the hydrogeology of the aquifer and, uh, the clay protection between the top soil and the, and that Great Lake. It's apparently quite a large, uh, lake of water, so I'm, I'm about, you know, heated by... Really hear that it could be a major concern, but it is one you could hear from people. Are they bottling our water? Is it going out of the country or whatever? But, uh, I think the question that Ms. Pat raises too about the, uh, what is, what gives the impetus to this discussion and debate? Is it, uh, the maintenance of the quality of our water, the treatment of our water with the, um, the chemicals that would lay any kind of mineral, you know, content that might be offensive? And then also, and I, and, and Mr. Hayes' remark about, you know, why should we get involved in a multi, in a very expensive capital outlay for something like this? That's a major concern. So I would, I would say all of those concerns, the, the quality of water, the, uh, reason for, uh, multi, um, expensive capital outlay, uh, the ability that we have to work with the other entities, municipal entities, as well as the university, if that's at all possible. I think those are, are major concerns. Plus, I understand the reason for the rate increase, one of the reasons that I've heard is that the, because of the, uh, security concerns, uh, as a result of the international terrorist threat, that there is a potential danger to our water supply, and therefore, uh, there has been a suggested rate increase of some 22% and requested by the ICC?
Yeah, in that regard. Yeah, in that ball.
Something like that.
In that ball.
So, all those, I think, you know, a definitive explanation or answer or question about those would be in place, and I would welcome it.
Further questions? If I could just add a couple of final thoughts, and one is regarding public comment, I think that if there's a way, I know in Urbana, we are lucky to have so many people who take such great interest and spend their Monday nights with us in the council chambers and others watching, if there's a way where people could submit public comment, perhaps via the internet through the city's webpage, and, I don't know if Champaign would do the same, or, or other entities that would be involved, so that people wouldn't feel like they'd have to give up their Monday evenings, but instead, you know, could just log on and, and give their public comment, and perhaps even spaces where they could fill in other information that council members may like to follow up on, like a name, address, phone number, email, and then all of those comments could be collected and copied to us at, all at one time, or something like that, so that, so that we could receive that information as well, and, and sort of a courtesy to the public, so that they don't have to give up their Monday nights to come and talk about this issue, since it'll be before us for quite some time. And the other is just echoing concerns or comments that other council members have made, and that is of support or interest in looking at municipal ownership. I think for a public resource like water, it, it makes sense where government would run this and take away the, the, the cap, well, the, the interest in making a profit on this and rather keep the interest in making sure that the public is, is the only interest that's being served, rather than any sort of stock prices or, or board of directors or that sort of thing, as compared to other issues like selling cars or pizzas where capitalists and enterprises make a little bit more sense. So, I, this is, these are the comments that I've heard as well, from constituents and people throughout the community. Mr. Hayes?
I'd just like to make a statement. On several occasions, Mr. Whelan mentioned about different people bottling water. I talked to one of the gentlemen who works for the water company, and he says that this is some of the purest water you can find anywhere, and that those people who spend money buying bottled water is just a waste of money. And he walks around with a bottle of water for fashion, but he takes it out the, out the faucet. So, I mean, I'm not, I just want to pass the word along that you do have some, some workers who believe in the product.
Appreciate that, and fact that we won the best case award in the state for second year, just very proud of it.
Mr. Walden?
Just, just in the interest of having balanced discussion, I, I know that we have a lot of issues coming up regarding the future and what, what's going to happen in the relationship between RWE, American Water, and, you know, protection of the aquifer, and there's a lot of issues that are in future issues, and things have changed, but I do, in the interest of having a balanced discussion, we, we have had a great working relationship with, with the water company, as long as I've been with the city, they have always cooperated, the best, one of the best utilities to work with, they work with us in right-of-way restoration issues, they worked with us in increasing water pressure in East Urbana, they have spent considerable sums of money in replacing the infrastructure in Urbana, never had serious water quality. Every now and then, when they do the coordination, every, twice a year, whatever, get a few complaints, but for the most part, you know, we've been complaint-free, and I can't say that for all the utilities that serve the City of Urbana. So, in the interest of a balanced discussion, I want to get that on the table, so.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on this agenda item? Okay, just before we go on, are there, is there an idea of when this issue will be back before us?
Oh, probably in a few weeks.
Okay, we'll look forward to that. Next is item number 11, closed session on collective bargaining. Is there a motion?
A motion. What we're going to close session, for purpose of collective bargaining?
There's a motion by Mr. Hayes?
Second.
And a second by Ms. Pat. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Ms. Whelan?
Yes.